Good evening and welcome to the March 3, 2011 meeting of the City of West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter for anyone who's interested. Just a reminder to the few people who are sitting in the audience that if you request, if you would like to speak, request forms are sitting on the side counter over there. Tonight's agenda is relatively short. Couple things, Ms. Sandin has an excused absence and Commissioner Galván is running a little bit late, so we are going to just start without him. First thing is the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to ask Ms. Blackburn this evening to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. This time I have no slip of paper and there are no requests to speak, so we'll move on to correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission secretary. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Leving. Good evening members of the commission. Last night the city council, they had a very lengthy meeting and one of the items on their agenda was a presentation and discussion on the general plan update relating to the traffic level of service policy. And I can report that they held discussion on it and essentially directed staff to continue on with incorporating the policy that the Planning Commission recommended almost a year ago now. There was some discussion about how West Capital and Harbor Boulevard intersection, how that should be characterized with regard to a level of service E. And so that will be moving, we'll be moving on with the draft policy document and incorporating that along with some other items such as the climate policies. And we'll be returning probably in the late spring with the draft policy document for Planning Commission review and discussion. And then the other matter we wanted to bring up to you is whether or not the Planning Commission members would entertain moving the May 19 meeting, which is the second meeting in May, to Wednesday, May 25th. And this would be to accommodate the West Coast recycling draft EIR public comment period. We have a window of 45 days and we typically like to bring the EIR before the Planning Commission in a workshop format during that timeframe and we try to hit sort of the middle of that 45 days. And May 19th is a little too early and the June meeting would be a little bit too late. So you don't have to make a decision tonight, we just wanted to alert you and if you could either contact Cindy or David Tilly whether or not you'd be in favor of that and then we can return and discuss it again at your next meeting. And that's all I have to report. Oh, actually there is one more thing. March 17th, the next meeting, we currently do not have any items scheduled for that, so I will probably be canceling that meeting. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to disclosures of ex parte communication? No? Okay. Well, there is something on the agenda tonight, so. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the February 17th meeting as revised passed up tonight. Any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the revised minutes for the February meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Moore. Second by Commissioner Chase. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Oops, sorry, didn't mean to do that. Meeting's not over, for clarification. Moving on to the regular agenda, presentation and discussion regarding the urban standards in the Bridge District.
Thank you Chairman. This item that's before you tonight is part of a requirement of the development agreements that were entered into with Smart Growth Investors LLC and Bridge District Riverfront LLC. This is part of the Bridge District associated with the Bridge District specific plan. As you may recall, the, some of you that were on the commission when the Bridge District specific plan amendments came through, there were a number of standards that were adjusted to recognize the urban nature of the Bridge District. And during our negotiations on the development agreement with the two developers, there were some differing legal opinions as to whether or not the entitlements that were granted for those two projects with the Bridge District specific plan amendments, whether or not those were sufficient to withstand any and all tests in the future and whether or not some cleanup items needed to be done with the general plan, with the zoning ordinances and possibly other city codes to sort of filter what was approved with the Bridge District specific plan into those other codes to sort of cross-reference and recognize that the Bridge District has different plan development standards. And so that's what these items are. They're essentially clarifications. I hope you found the matrix helpful in identifying the language that is to be added to various code sections and those would be shown in the red. And then for reference, the two areas that are the, probably have the most detail are items related to noise and traffic. And for those sections, I did include the sections out of the EIR and essentially that's what is being incorporated into the general plan policies is specific references to those standards that were adopted. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you. Jeff, do we actually officially need to open a public workshop this evening?
No. No, this is not a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be for recommendation to the city council.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just a question of clarification. Lesson three regarding the mitigation to address the noise levels. Is there anything in your notes to address all these rules?
Um, no. Those, they felt that they could handle, meet the city's standards via architectural designs.
Mr. Moore?
Sure. I guess I have just a couple of quick questions on this, but a lot of times when you've used the little red stuff, it says unless specified otherwise in the adopted specific plan. What's that mean?
That means the specific plan probably has a tremendous amount of detail and it's not something that we would want to add all that language into a general plan policy. So it's more of a reference pointing out to the specific plan.
So which plan supersedes which?
The Bridge District.
Will the specific plan overrule any of these changes that you've made?
No, they should be identical. The ones, where it says as, let's give an example, that might be helpful.
Well, I was just doing the first one and it says that right on the very first one. The zoning ordinance for the waterfront zone.
Right. The reason for that is there are a lot of the density, the dwellings per unit, the specific plan doesn't specify densities in this format. It varies based on neighborhood. There is not a minimum FAR per se within the specific plan, however, there is one within their financing plan that provides for monetary incentives for them to build above a certain floor area ratio. So in an effort not to much, not to increase tremendously the size of this particular general plan policy, I put language in that would essentially point, direct you out to a specific plan.
Okay, but again, I guess I'm back to the same question. So if that, if this plan...
The specific plan does control over what is shown here.
In your example, the very first one, which is a provision in the zoning code, what it's saying is this will apply throughout the riverfront and mixed use area unless there is something else identified in the specific plan. So in the case of the Bridge District, because there are other standards, they would control over this provision.
Yeah, because, well, we could have other standards there. I mean, I remember going through that and it's a, that's a big document. I mean, it's three or four documents before you get totally done with it. And that's why I was kind of curious, this plan would apply virtually everywhere else in the city except possibly in the Bridge District?
You're talking about that first item for example?
Yeah, just as an example.
That is existing, that's the existing provisions in those.
For the zoning ordinance, so it would apply everywhere in the city where a plan development didn't specify otherwise.
Right, so in the Bridge District, we have a plan development, it could say something a little different.
Correct.
And in fact, the point of putting this in is because it does, because the specific plan does have different requirements.
So I guess my question is, we said we were doing this to clean up that plan, but we really aren't. We're just cleaning up our general plan.
It's to, it's to provide more clarification in documents outside of the specific plan documents, such as the zoning ordinance, the general plan policy document, the other areas, the municipal codes such as the tree ordinance.
So that first item is a change to the zoning code, as is the second and third and fourth, and when you get over to the next page, there are a couple of general plan changes? That's what the point here is, all of these are changes to things other than the specific plan, to point you back to the specific plan.
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing here and that's exactly what I was reading into it, is it kind of applies to everywhere else in town except for the specific plan that we have in the Bridge District. And those change, those could be a little different than what this says.
Correct.
Is that just a fair statement?
I think so.
I think, well, I don't know. You wrote it.
It's not necessarily limited to the Bridge District either. It's a general reference to any other specific plan that may have been adopted.
Well, we could have another one, okay. You know, and if I was just to make a comment on it and we want to talk about something in the future, of course, I would like to talk about parking and joint uses and things of that nature, because if we cut it back too much, even though it talks about making a reduction in parking in here, it concerns me a little bit because we've already seen that when we reduced the parking across the street, it didn't work. And so I, I mean specifically in here, one of the things that really caught my eye was the part about parking, it's at the bottom of that first page. It says, and if you start doing mixed uses, you might be able to have an increase in the reduction.
Yeah, actually...
And I'm not sure that I agree with that statement at all, because I'm not sure that I think we want to reduce it any further after what we've experienced across the street.
Yeah, actually in that one, if you're referring to 1734-033?
Exactly.
Well, that, what's being added to that section is that this particular reference does not apply to the Bridge District because it has its own parking program.
I understand that.
So...
Maybe that's all it's saying here, but I mean, if we're going to talk about any of these changes, that would be one in particular that I'd still like to revisit because I'm not sure that even if you have a joint use, I'd like to see a reduction in parking. And those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I do have a couple. One, one thing that caught my eye again, and this is only a comment and I'm just going to bring it up. The level of service F designation, I know it looks kind of scary and I looked over the list and that is my commute line, exactly. It is every street intersection that I use to get on the freeway, on and off the freeway, and I still support it. I, I do believe that we need to be focusing on non-single person passenger vehicles and starting to promote those uses as well. And if it means a few more seconds at a streetlight, yeah, I think it's like 30 more seconds, it's not the end of the world. I'm still in favor of that, that was one comment. I do have one recommendation that I would like the commission to consider passing along to the council, and this is something that I feel that we may have missed when originally reviewing the architectural design guidelines for the Bridge District. And it's something that came up with a debate about Seattle actually recently, and it's signage. Now, the city general plan does not allow rooftop signage. That doesn't mean that they don't allow signage on the tops of the sides of the buildings. For example, Calsters, you're allowed to have a sign on the tops of the building. My concern is that when you look at our skyline, as we're creating our skyline, are you going to be looking at signs or are you going to be looking at the architecture of the buildings? I wanted council, I would like council to consider directing staff or the Planning Commission to look at changes in the zoning ordinance to limit the elevation of signs on buildings, so they're not necessarily at the tops of buildings. And it's just a recommendation to look into it, it's not a, we can't actually make a recommendation this evening, it's a, it's more, it's a complicated one. Thoughts on that one? Blank stares. If, if anybody doesn't feel it's important, that's fine, it was just something I would wanted to bring up.
I think it would be on a specific building. I'm not, I'm not sure that I care one way or another. I don't know why, I don't even know what the thought was, I don't know what happened in Seattle, so I don't know what you're thinking. But I mean, I, I'm not opposed to Calsters having a sign there, yet you turn right around to the Pyramid Building, there isn't a sign on it at all. It's the architect that they look at, so I, I don't know that I specifically care one way or another, I'd have to see what the issue is and deeper than you should look at.
I'm not sure if it's an issue as much as a concern. If you look across the river, you see a skyline and you notice architecture, they don't have a lot of signage on the sides of the buildings up top on the Sacramento side, except for South Nettomas, there is a building that does have a sign on it. Calsters is a state building, so that's a little bit different. The reason I'm bringing this up now is because we haven't built out yet. We don't change this after you build out. This is something that has to be addressed beforehand and it's just something that I thought we may have overlooked and if the commission feels the same, we can pass on a recommendation. If, if not, then I think the meeting's close to being over. Mr. Chase?
No. First of all, I'd like to go back to your comments on level of service F and your commute route. I too am affected by a number of those and I also agree with you fully, I think. Back to your comment about the city not being built out with a signage, I think we face the same issues with all those service. If we build some of these intersections to the proper level of service, we're going to have wider streets that we will be living with for the next 50, 100 years and it could interfere with, you know, transit, streetcars, anything else that may come along. So I, I just want to totally concur with your comments on that. I think, you know, we've come to the point where in urban environments, level of service F, there are places and times when it's necessarily appropriate. With regard to the signage thing, I guess I didn't know, I know typically state building Calsters or anywhere else are oftentimes completely, you know, exempt from any requirements. I don't know if there, but sometimes there are discretionary requirements that may have had leverage. So I don't know if the signage came through Planning Commission or council or anything else for it, but perhaps rather than it be, being a blanket allowed thing, it should be dealt with on a, you know, either variance or a case-by-case basis. You know, I think, I think we know, you know, certainly Rayleigh Field has got signage, we may have other tenants that may help us move forward that, I guess I'm also more concerned about quality of signage than quantity of it, so, you know, that's, that's a tough thing to build into an ordinance, but I would entertain it if it was well done, I think, and you know, in terms of lighting and everything, but I'm not, I don't, as I understand it too, Charlene, right now we don't have a free-for-all with signage, we do have restrictions on it, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, there, it would default to our sign ordinance if it's not prescribed in the Bridge District. And there's of course certain letter height restrictions, there is also sign area restrictions. Within the Bridge District, I did take a look at the architectural design guidelines before the meeting and there is a section on building mounted signage. It does not address signage mounted on high-rise buildings, it's silent. It, but in the, in the depictions and in the descriptions, it talks more about signage being at a pedestrian level, about retail, you know, ground floor having signage that is at the first floor level or just above the first floor level, but it is silent on buildings mounted up on the top, say, or near the top of a high-rise. So that may be something that the Planning Commission wants to recommend to the council that a, a more defined sign program be developed and brought forward for the Bridge District specific plan, that would certainly be acceptable. And then with regard to the traffic level of service, the level F for these certain intersections was taken straight out of the EIR. Last night, as part of the traffic level of service general plan policy, the recommendation that came from the Planning Commission and that the council is directing us to include actually identifies level of service E as the overall acceptable level of service for the Bridge District and other urban areas. So it could be that we want to make a slight adjustment to this to recognize E for the overall district and F just for these intersections.
Mr. Chair? Can I have one more comment to staff? And this is, I'm not sure where it fits in, but I'm a, have been a longtime proponent of just urban living, I've lived in cities and, and I think as we know, reading through these documents and going through the specific plan, whether, there are certain things that come up as you urbanize and as you increase density. And I think a lot of these things, you know, have been addressed here. One that I, I didn't see anywhere, and I've seen it before and I think it's an issue, as we increase density, we build, bring buildings closer together, particularly residential. And I think there should be somehow a consideration of window placement in adjacent residences such that they're not, when they're 10 feet away from each other in Southport and we've got a fence between them, you know, you really aren't looking into somebody else's thing. When you drop your yards down, code, building code will allow three feet on each one, suddenly you're a lot closer and I think there should be something that would offset or look at offsetting windows so that you can get light and maintain privacy. I think it goes to privacy is, is, needs to be a major concern as we increase density and bring things down. And again, I believe in the density, but I think it needs to be done well and properly. Not sure where that fits in, but I had to throw it out.
Charlene, that would be covered in the architectural guidelines, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I'm looking to see, it's not jumping out at me.
I didn't see it.
But it's something that you can definitely mention and if I'm not able to find it before this proceeding to council, I can add that in as part of the, one of the Planning Commission's concerns, if you so choose.
As a matter of process, is it possible to actually address that document at this time?
The architectural design guidelines?
Where, I guess it's a similar comment on the, on the signage. Signage is more of a, the general plan, I think it could fit into the general plan. I'm not sure if we can address the architectural guidelines or would the signage fit into both?
That would be, that would essentially be a plan development amendment at this point and that's something that we, I'm not sure we were prepared to.
Right, and I mean, I think some general discussion consistent with the items on the agenda, but if we'd like to have a more thorough discussion, that should probably be agendaed, so.
Okay. For a point of clarification, do either topics fit into this clearly? So in other words, signage or the windows can either be recommended to council?
Can maybe? Is that a question?
As far as an urban standard?
Yes.
I think you can, you can include as part of your recommendation that the council directs staff to consider those or to bring them back. Acceptable. Keep in mind that the, as a general statement, the purpose here is, is in fact cleanup to make it consistent with the specific plan. It's not really being brought forward right now with the idea in mind of revisiting the specific plan.
So? Still, we're here to just pass on recommendations to council and this is just a public workshop this evening and there's no decision being made here tonight.
Right. I think adding both of those as comments that they need to be looked at is not the end of the world. You know, and whether or not you take that we're not going to have any signage, but I, I have to believe that really what you want to say is you don't have signs unless you get a use permit for a high-rise sign is probably what you want, because there's always an occasion where you may want to have a sign on a building. You know, I don't know what it is, but you don't take away all your options, so maybe the, you know, like, we were talking there and then, you know, Bob was talking a second ago about maybe you make it a conditional thing for a high sign. And I know we discussed the low signs and, and I was like Charlene, I don't remember ever discussing anything high up on the building, but I think we, when we talked about signage, it was all relatively low. But to add something about when you talk about whether we want every building to have a flashy neon sign and the idea of the windows, you know, I don't know what we can do about it today, but I mean, both of them might be something that you want to at least let the council know that you were thinking about those and we probably shouldn't look at them at some point. that you were thinking about those, and we probably shouldn't look at them at some point.
Charlene, to keep my recommendation legal, the recommendation specifically would be to restrict signage above a certain height. It wouldn't be to restrict signage entirely.
Yeah, I have possibly limit the, the height mounting location on a building.
Thank you. Are there any other comments this evening? I do have a couple of comments, and I apologize for coming in a few minutes late. We may have already covered it. Charlene, can you remind me the difference in time between the levels of service?
Yes. Level, traffic level of service or vehicular traffic on a single, signalized intersection, level of service C is an approximate 20 to 35-second delay. Then when you move to, say, level of service D, it's 35 to 55-second delay. So there's about a 15-second change in between each level of service. Level of service F is considered to be greater than 80-second delay.
So why would F, as opposed to, say, D or E, be more desirable at those specific intersections? What effect does it have on the intersection?
The intersection is, basically, it's a smaller intersection. It's more pedestrian-friendly. It's not as wide, so pedestrians do not have to cross as far. It's also more, promotes more transit-oriented development. The, the urban areas, the greater congestion you have, the more vibrant they are. And it's also more likely that people will get out of their cars and use transit.
As opposed to waiting at that intersection? Is that what I meant?
Yes. You're, to give also some idea about level of service, level of service E is, is where you get your most efficient use of the design of the intersection. And that's because when it's operating at level of service E, it's operating at the capacity for which it was designed. So less than level of service E is basically then, like C or D, there's, you're, you're, you've overbuilt your intersection a little bit, and it's unused in its capacity. And so you've essentially expended more money, and you're not quite getting the value out of it.
80 seconds seems like an awful long time for intersections that are already backed up.
F is considered, now you've exceeded the design capacity, but that is not uncommon in urban areas. Some cities like Sacramento actually did away with a level of service entirely within their, the downtown area. But that's not to say that they just ignore it and allow building to keep going. They, they require mitigation in other ways, such as increased transit or other types of opportunities for bicycle and pedestrian.
So are these levels that can be reviewed, in other words, if they go to F and find out that it's just not working? Are those intersections being...
If they reach F, it, the, the solution will be transit. Because at that point, the Bridge District will be billed out. F is when the Bridge District is billed out. So that's, that's...
We're just, we're just opening the parameter to F at this point, but E is the recommended?
E is what the Council put forth as being the overall policy for the urban areas, which means, let's, at billed out, let's maximize the intersections and use them to their fullest design capability.
Can I break in? Charlene, I'm sorry, Charlene, we, we've, we, we have decided this for the Bridge District specifically already, have we not?
Yes, the EIR's been certified, the traffic analysis is done. These intersections that are showing F is what was shown in the traffic analysis, and overrides were taken at the time the EIR was certified for those intersections that it billed out would be operating at an unacceptable level.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Just in regards to the, the traffic lights, at, at what point will that be synchronized with the rest of the city when it connects up? I mean, I, I know we don't have any huge thoroughfares affected yet, but, you know, down the road, I'd want to make sure that that's something that's done for...
Yeah, the signals that we put in, we are installing them with the capability out in the field to be synchronized. We do have some intersections along Jefferson that are. However, what we really need is a significant software purchase and transportation hub at City Hall to really complete the synchronization. And that is, that is a plan, and, and when we have the budget to do that, that is something we will pursue.
The software along Jefferson can't handle a grid?
I'm sorry?
The software that we purchased, I think it was like $250,000 for that software, does that not handle the, the grid system for the Bridge District? The software that controls Jefferson Boulevard, the synchronization of that?
There's, and there's an addition that we need to do in order to synchronize the West Capital signals. And that is my understanding. But I really, I mean, if we want to get into this discussion, I, I really should have one of our transportation specialists here.
I'm sure it would, I'm sure it will come at some point.
But yes, the plan is to have the, the signals on the, the major thoroughfare synchronized and actually be able to be controlled from a central location at City Hall.
Okay. I'm not sure how that would fit in as a comment or, but I would definitely want that to be included as a, as a need.
Okay. Keep an eye on that.
Okay. Unless there are any other comments, questions, so we move on to informal discussion. And just a reminder...
Can I just repeat real quick?
Mm-hmm.
So what I have is the building-mounted signage. I have the, I'll look into the windows. There is some discussion of windows in the Architectural Guidelines. I just haven't been able to pinpoint whether they actually discuss privacy. A change to the traffic level of service, recognizing what the Council moved forward last night in addition to these intersections. And then the joint-use parking. And I will mention that because Public Works is taking on an endeavor for implementing the parking program in the urban districts. And so I believe that's, that would be a good fit for that. Any, was that, is that sufficient?
That's your line.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we move to informal discussion, or part of informal discussion, the March 17th Planning Commission meeting is tentative at this point. However, there are no items on the agenda, so that may be canceled. And our May 19th meeting may move to May 25th, pending Commissioners' input.
I want to just do that next. Does anybody have a problem with moving?
Was it May 19th or the March 19th?
I think it's May.
It's May.
It's May, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty far out. We wanted to give you lots of notice.
Oh, that's just a far...
And it would be a Wednesday, because that's the only night that week that this, these chambers would be available.
Do we need to motion for that, or just go around the room?
I think we're just telling, I don't care. It's fine with me.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Actually, March 25th worked even better for me, so...
On May 20th?
May.
May 25th.
That's the whole look at calendar of the wall. I think we're probably going to be fine.
And if you're unsure at this time, you can contact Cindy or David Tilly, and they'll reschedule at a later time. Okay, we'll go on with that then.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else?
Informal discussion.
Formal, this was part of informal discussion. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I actually, you know, Charlene, in our sign ordinance, I thought that there was, that we prohibited or limited A-frame signs. Do you have any remember that?
We limited A-frame signs. I believe we have...
And I don't really care, and you don't have to look it up, but I've noticed all of a sudden, all over the city, on every corner, it seems like somebody's put an A-frame sign up. And at one point, we had them almost eliminated off the sidewalks, and I don't know why, but all of a sudden, they're back. And I just thought I'd mention that as a comment. Okay?
Yes, I can have code enforcement look into it, because there are some limitations.
I don't remember what we wrote. It was a long time ago.
Well, I've got it right here. It has to be within 20 feet of the front entrance of the building.
I think you should have somebody look at it.
Thought so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Morris, second by Commissioner Galván. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I ask? Thank you.